...the border, pass people in between drives. We're gonna be invoated by Councilman Carr, called by the pledge of allegiance to the Constitution. Agree?
Um, it may be very happy the other day when I got the news that the Supreme Court says it's going to parade at council meetings. So I have a little provocation. I call the time news today and I'm gonna have two hundred of them printed up. So if you come to the council meetings, I'll give them what these, uh, what these folks can text me with their. And the prayer that I'm gonna sing today is called Freedom of Religion. Lord, let us pray for those in public office that our God and Lord may direct their minds and hearts according to His will for the true peace and freedom of all. Almighty ever living God, on whose hands like every human heart and ranks of peoples, look with favor we pray on those who govern with authority, that throughout the world prosperity for peoples and freedom of religion remains through your gift we may secure. Amen.
Let the teachings of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well called.
Carr.
I'm here.
Evans.
Here.
Lasky.
Here.
Mace.
Here.
Startle.
Here.
Gersky.
Here.
Well, the reading of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Motion to the Supreme Court.
Second.
There's a motion by David and a second by Tom. Anybody wanna address this motion? Is anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. Communications.
I just have one. It's an invitation and announcement of the Tamaka Salvation Army Tamaka for two thousand and fourteen annual dinner, which will be held on Friday, May sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at the Salvation Army at one oh five West Rogers Street, Tamaka. The reception is from five thirty to five forty-five and the dinner is at six P. M. and the cost is eighteen dollars per person and R S V P by May ninth. That's all.
Girl managers report.
Uh, yes, uh, first under my list is the results for the sale of these girl equipment. Uh, how much you have a copy of the bid results? Would you like to go through even?
In the back of your packet. That's the, that's the best you can do?
Uh, we did get, uh, well, we had five pieces of equipment that we, well, we did. Uh, the building was on, uh, May first, April five, we did. And we got this on three of five pieces of equipment. Now, after the fact, uh, we did get verbal, uh, proposals on the other two pieces of equipment, which we didn't get this for. Uh, and those are, were the greatly writing over what this, uh, this office, two hundred dollars. And, uh, we're a Chevy, new Chevy pickup truck. Uh, James Vaughn of Allen Street, it is on business. It was four fifty. Want to find my sheet? Yes, that's what it was.
You want to motion to, uh, the team? Underneath this?
Uh, we, we look at the prices. So, uh, like, uh, that would be my recommendation.
I'll make sure that we sell the three pieces of equipment. That's on this bid tab and the other two that are verbal proposals.
Second, Dan.
There's a motion by Tom, a second question. Uh, just, just for our occasion, nineteen seventy four Braxwell and I gave it three thousand two hundred and ten dollars. The nineteen sixty one Patacor, one thousand five hundred dollars. And the ninety two Mercury, so that's eight hundred fifty. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
Okay, now, the next item is a resolution for a shore extension on Lincoln Drive in hometown. Um, this is a request that we received from, uh, the township said near, uh, the yellow room. Um, they are planning a, uh, a shore extension project on their, um, Lincoln Drive. Uh, it requires, um, approval by, uh, council, and also, uh, the, uh, the sewer. Uh, the reason it requires our approval was because we have an agreement with the, uh, to treat the wastewater and, uh, but what this approval says is that so we have adequate capacity, uh, to treat the additional wastewater from the town. Uh, this sewer, uh, we're attempting to do that, uh, with the, uh, with the, they approved that there last year. Uh, so now, uh, what we have is a, uh, a resolution from council, uh, saying we have an adequate facility to convey and treat the wastewater. So make the motion to adopt the resolution to approve the Lincoln Drive shore extension project.
There's a motion by Dave and a second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question for you. I read through that and I couldn't find out how many, uh, how many more questions would be on the system. Did you get that?
Yeah, I could tell you. I don't, I don't believe it's necessarily states. Yeah.
It wasn't in the, uh, the, uh, we got?
Yeah, we also received.
You mean, is it like ten or is it like fifty?
It is, um, they also provided us with this document, which is their, uh, application to D E P. Uh, it's modifying their sewer facilities. Okay, uh, they're talking about eight thousand additional gallons per day and, uh, twenty five properties.
Okay.
Some commercial, some residential. I'm not feeling with Lincoln Drive, but this would go, this would be that road by, uh, like, uh, the Seals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that way.
That, that road there that's two thousand.
So it doesn't, does this mean that there's more income for Tamaka girl with this?
Uh, well, we build township and then they build their customer. So, yeah, it would, it would alter, uh, our, the amount that we build for township. Yeah, we, we estimate, uh, e- every year the engineer estimates what the rest township share of, of the sewer treatment costs are. And then, uh, at the end of the year, we reconcile that.
So our, our rates that we pay in Tamaka is sixty-five dollars?
Yes.
And with, you know, your hometown rate?
I don't know what their rates were.
It's much higher than ours.
Yes, I don't know.
A lot higher.
So it's, we have a good thing in Tamaka, huh?
We probably have the lowest sewer rate in the state. According to the authorities in here.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just thank you for that clarification. I wasn't sure where, what Lincoln Drive was in hometown.
Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, it's a resolution, so we'll have the roll call vote.
Carr.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Lasky.
Yes.
Mace.
Yes.
Startle.
Yes.
Gersky.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, the next item concerns our floodplain ordinance. Uh, we received, uh, correspondence from the Department of Community and Economic Development. Um, they are putting out, uh, sample or sample floodplain ordinance to address all of these counties, uh, as they too, uh, conform to, um, I believe, uh, Hilton probably has a, uh, sheet on that showing, uh, the proposed timeframe for adoption of the ordinance. Our current ordinance isn't all that old. It's about four years old. Uh, but there are differences from our current ordinance to what, to the sample that they provide us. Uh, Josh, who is our code officer, who marries it, he, uh, attended a floodplain conference recently, so he's, he's pretty well at the speed on how this work. Uh, I've provided him with a copy of, of what we received and he's gonna review it and then make recommendations for, for revising the ordinance. Uh, so that, that's what, that's all we know. I think they're looking for a revised ordinance from us by November, as I recall. I don't have that sheet in front of me, but I think it's November, is it November?
It's November, right? It's November.
Does this require any action today?
Uh, no, we don't have anything to present to you today.
So who will prepare that?
Uh, Josh will come to us with recommendations and we'll get it from council to review. Oh, our previous meeting, council approved a, uh, a lighting project, um, Alape Solar is, uh, gives proposals to upgrade our exterior lighting on many of our buildings free of charge. Uh, to be changed, uh, to LEDs. That project was, uh, under construction today and should be, should be done today. Uh, also just a reminder that at the next meeting, the next meeting incidentally is on Wednesday, the twenty-first, uh, due to the election. And we will be meeting at six thirty, uh, above that evening to have the first public hearing for the twenty fourteen C E B G program.
Kevin, if I may, um, your comment about the, uh, lighting project, uh, John, the my memory about, uh, something to dovetail out of that discussion is sort of a discussion about changing the street lighting over to LED lights as well. And of course, the street lights are owned by P P L. Uh, I did make some, uh, inquiries to P P L about, uh, about doing that and they indicated that they have a, I guess, preliminary plan, uh, to change fixtures over to LED fixtures, but the rate has to be approved by the P U C. They're in the process of getting that approval done through, they anticipate that that taking through the rest of the, rest of this year. Uh, so it's possible that at the beginning of next year, then they would be able to start rolling out, um, fixture changeovers in communities that currently don't have LED fixtures to have. Of course, I put a good word to try and have the boroughs block with close to the top of the list. Uh, but, um, you know, it's something to be revisited in, like, the general timeframe. Agreed.
We've been bugging them for quite a bit, trying to, um, not just us, in other communities or pressing. Agreed. Uh, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Kevin. Police chief?
Yes, I am Alada. Last year I talked to you about our reporting system and how the county would be offering free system to us. I don't think we're gonna be able to want a free system because we can't take eighteen years of data and incorporate it into the new system. So the total cost, which I'm not asking for tonight, to update our system, we have, right now it's called Visual Alert One, which is our reporting system for all our police reports. It generates the different forms we need for police reporting. This is, the new one is Visual Alert Two. The total cost varying is about thirty-eight hundred dollars. Fifteen hundred of that is what we pay every year normally just to use the system. So to go to Visual Alert Two, we're looking at twenty-three hundred dollars. The next council meeting, I'll probably be discussing that with, I guess, some final results on some inquiries. But because we can't migrate our data from eighteen years into the new system, it's not gonna be much use for us. And that's something I think everyone in the county would have a problem with.
So you'll have, your final number to go in the council meeting?
Yeah.
There's something we'll definitely get a money for that.
Yeah, and fifteen hundred dollars is normally what we pay. It's just thirty-eight hundred combined, so we're looking at the twenty-three hundred dollar cost. I'll probably be asking for in the council meeting. Just to give you the heads up and that's all I have.
Thank you, chief. Any reports?
Uh, this panel, I'd like to break from our traditional, uh, agenda and request that we go into executive session at this time to discuss personnel.
A second. There's a motion by David, a second by Justin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. We're gonna break, uh, we go for going to executive session. We've got the first one. So that's all that's, that's how it happens. We'll call you back in. Go for that. Thank you.
This is presented by the council of April fifteenth, twenty fourteen.
Okay, there's a motion by Tom and a second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no?
No.
Roll call room.
Carr.
Yes.
Evans.
No.
Lasky.
No.
Mace.
No.
Startle.
Yes.
Gersky.
No.
I'd like to make a motion to hire, uh, the following candidates for part-time lifeguards and clerks for the twenty fourteen pool season. Lifeguards, Earl Atkins, Allison Amadea, Nathan Bastanzi, Emily Bumbolski, Joanne Buckus, Tyler Buckus, Ethan Eberts, Chelsea Franz, Amber Bullock, Melanie Kostecy, Victoria Lebar, Rebecca Myhan, Jordan Malaki, John Visco, Matthew Stanek, Dana Starry, Carly Trovenger, Andrew Corano, Belia Van Durin, Catherine Wagner, Megan Wagner, Gage Whalen, Andrea Whitby, and guards, Beth Chrisimer Jones, oh, sorry, clerks, Beth Chrisimer Jones, Breanna Heck, Justin Newbell, and Emily Letzel.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion by David, a second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? Please stand up and state your name and address.
My name's Kathy Nudamacher, three twenty-two Monroe Street. Um, last year I know there was a lot of times pool was closed early and it wasn't even open on days because there wasn't enough lifeguards. So when the kids go back to, to college, a lot of times they weren't open during the day or, you need, I don't think that's right if you're gonna be, you know, member of the pool and you, you know, you're kind of going up there and it's not open. There's no, is there any full-time that don't go to school?
No, they're all, they're all part-time.
But is there any that does not go to college?
I don't know.
Cause I think this would work out.
Uh, yes, there are, there are high school age children, or high school age guards and college age guards.
Cause there was a lot of times it goes early and I don't think that's right, that they should have a schedule that it doesn't close, it's open from what?
Eleven thirty to seven thirty or it will close early if the number of patrons fall below, uh, ten or fifteen. I can't remember what the, the number is, but if it falls before a certain, below a certain number, they will, will close early for that purpose.
And what, what's the thing with the rain? They don't close just for rain, do they?
They, pool does close for weather, yes.
If it's thunder and lightning, but water don't just rain?
Um, I believe that it closes for just rain as well, but I'm, I'm, sorry, I'm not well informed.
Cause there are times when you just sprinkle a little bit and then it gets sunny and, and pool would stay closed the rest of the day.
It, it does when the, when the staff gets sent home because it's closed for weather, it does stay closed then.
We've always, we always have that issue at the end of the season.
But I just think that that should be covered more differently, that because all the college kids go back to school, the pool doesn't open up on, you know, on the regular days.
Don't you generally announce a season though, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, the, the last day of the season is gonna be the Sunday before the first day of school and that's one of the reasons we don't stay open during that, the week between, uh, basically the first week of school up to Labor Day, uh, because we had, I mean, the, the college age kids are gone and, uh, the high school, a lot of the high schoolers, uh, are involved in other activities and basically their school year has started too. So we've, in essence, had to push up the, the close of this, uh, or the end of the season by a week over what was traditionally Labor Day weekend because of, uh, not having any staff available. Try and stay open as much as we can.
Any other questions or comments about the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no?
No.
Roll call room.
Carr.
No.
Evans.
Yes.
Lasky.
No.
Mace.
Yes.
Startle.
No.
Gersky.
Yes.
Three three.
Yeah, I'm confused. The motion is to hire the list as attached to the packet. What's that, Chris, more like?
All right, now, this is, I don't see a reason not to hire this. If there's any additions, we could make additions to the next, at the next meeting. That's correct. Uh, so I'll go with yes.
Motion passes. Can we can, we can?
Certainly add additions at the next meeting, but I'll go with yes. Let's keep moving with the statute.
Um, I'd also like to make a motion to set the starting wage for full lifeguards and clerks at seven twenty-five dollars, because, I'm sorry, seven dollars and twenty-five cents per hour with a quarter per hour increase for each year of service and to adjust returning employee wage recording.
Motion by David, a second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just as a comment, this moves the floor of the, uh, salaries standpoint from, what was, six dollars an hour to seven and a quarter.
Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no? Ayes have it.
I'd like to make a motion to hire Matthew Stanek as senior lifeguard at a pay rate of ten dollars per hour when he's acting as pool manager.
A second. Motion by Dave, a second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no? Ayes have it.
And, uh, also in council's packet, there's some information, uh, that was received by, uh, Kevin, uh, Kevin that, uh, solicited the information, uh, from L N S Electrical Construction to put in a hundred amp electrical service at the William Pool. Uh, currently the, the pool is served by one twenty amp circuit that has part-time on twenty amp heater that I believe that's split into twenty amp circuits, thirty, thirty amp heater that's put in twenty amp. I'm not sure whether it is. Whatever the specifics are, it's definitely undersized for, uh, advanced wear, typically dry pods or dry, et cetera, et cetera, and breakers tend to be frequent. Uh, so, uh, there's, um, a bid there from L N S Construction, uh, in the amount of twenty, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars to install a new hundred amp electrical service at this pool, William. Uh, that also, uh, I'm sorry, it's not included. In addition to that, there would be, uh, service charges from P P L to provide that electric service, this separate metered service, uh, in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. So I'd like to make a motion to accept a proposal from L N S Electrical Construction in the, in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars to upgrade the electrical system in the Pundwood Park building.
Motion by David, a second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Uh, this is a comment, oh, uh, that, uh, our recommendation would be that any cord would come from Puns that would be meaning from the, uh, working train that was used to construct the concession. Just so you know.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the?
This is part of that? Yes.
All right.
That's the P P L's extension of the service from where the last pole is on parallel on the, uh, roadway. It was, uh, uh...
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? Please stand up and state your name and address.
Rashama Hawke, three thirteen Orange Road, Chumaqua. I, I heard you say he's doing it. I'm not telling you what you should do, but after he's done, make sure you double check cause I'm running into a bunch of problems up the South Door playground. He was the guy that did ours and I like Larry, but you need to make sure you're checking as you go there. Cause we are still going. We blow fuses left and right up there.
Okay, um, I, I certainly understand with the, uh, uh, total materials is that these you provided or that the number of circuits could provide, it's actually what I do professionally. So I'd certainly be willing to, uh, take a look at the completed construction, uh, whenever that's done.
Can you look at this off or?
I could, yeah. I mean, I, I, there, there's two parts to that, though. I mean, there's the, there's the construction and what was designed to be built there and then what people are trying to run off, but sometimes people try to plug in more than what. So I'm, I'm not saying that's necessarily happening here, but it could be one or, or another one.
Well, I'm, just from our experience when for our stoves, not our stoves, our fryers, the wrong hookups.
Okay.
So we had to get another guy in there to come and redo.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just telling you for your own good, just stay on top of it.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the floor wish to address? Stand up and state your name and address.
Twenty-eight South Railroad, Street, Tamaka. Is there a compelling reason why there's maybe a separate service and separate meter on that, uh, based off of? Um, I know generally speaking, every meter carries a separate service, a meter fee when you get your life. And, and that's a gift that keeps on giving to your budget on a, a, a never ending basis. And if that is something that can be avoided and pull it off of the main service leader that's already out of the pool, you might be saving some money in the long run because I suspect it's gonna be there for decades probably.
In the short term, the, uh, the thought would be it's a, it's a significantly shorter distance to go the way that we're going now as opposed to trying to pull it down from the service at the pool office, which would be where we'd have to come from. So it'd be a dumb distance, probably underground at that point, so.
It's just a question, something to consider, is that a meter charge is gonna be the accessory after a while? And it's not something that goes to the P U C for the utilities to have to improve. They wanna rise your meter fee another five months, a month, they do. Yeah.
Anything else? Anybody else have any questions or comments about the, not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no? Ayes have it. Anything else?
I'll, I think.
Is there anybody from the floor that wishes to address council about any issue? Please stand up and state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Dawn Hill and I live in love.
Your, your name and address, please?
Dawn Hill. I live at sixty-five O Street. My son is at sixty-three. The house in between us is sixty-three and a half. The people moved out eight years ago and their three rooms are shot. We can hear ceilings fall down and water dripping. I can look my attic as it's open, the attic's grow homes and you see the water dripping down. Now, it's a fire hazard because it's looking to my son's side in the hall where his light is. His back bedroom was ruined on one wall. Now it's starting to run in my basement. The people, they did have it up for sale, but they won't go. They can't sell because there's forty thousand dollars to me buy. Now, they didn't pay taxes since two thousand and five. How do I find out who, what mortgage company or bank owns this?
They would pay taxes since two thousand and five. I would have to think it's gonna be going up on, on a judicial sale.
It was a, it was a.
Once it goes on judicial sale, they'll waive all those, those, uh, um...
They had, they had a judicial sale on it and it can sell.
Well, judicial sales, because they're free and clear sales. There's no lien to the judicial sale.
The way you would find out is with things around.
I would find out who owns it. I mean, they own it, but I wouldn't see what mortgage company or bank owns it if I'm going after that.
You can, you can do a title search.
I would do that, I'm not. Why, I'd get a lawyer?
An attorney. Or you can go over the, you can go over to the courthouse itself and, and where, where the liens are posted at the courthouse. But they could show you what, what mortgage is, what liens, the mechanic liens, if there's, if we put a lien for back taxes in there.
You can do nothing about it?
No, it's still owned by, it's still owned by the property. What we can do is we could send the, the code enforcement officer.
Cause we have to cut the grass.
Do you know where the owner is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have our address right here.
Okay, if you could, if you can call the, uh, Kevin, if you can contact the neighbors and get the name and address of the owner.
Cause we have to maintain the grass, shovel the paint. Well, this year he is not gonna cut the grass, I'm gonna be calling yous. And then yous can find them.
Well, we, what we could do is we could, we could cite the owner for not cutting the grass.
And shoveling the paint.
Or shoveling the paint.
The roofs are falling down, you can hear them just falling down.
The ceilings just fall down.
Yeah, and code violations like that too can be cited, but, you know, issuing a citation or notice of violation isn't gonna fix the, fix the...
But we're gonna have mold problem now.
You're gonna have mold.
Um, so there's nothing we can do because it's become, becoming such a safety hazard and we can't do anything? And what if it collapses?
The roofs are falling down, you can hear them just falling down.
The ceilings just fall down.
Yeah, and code violations like that too can be cited, but, you know, issuing a citation or notice of violation isn't gonna fix the, fix the.
But we're gonna have mold problem now.
You're gonna have mold.
So there's nothing we can do because it's become, becoming such a safety hazard, we can't do anything? And what if it collapses?
We would set our code, did, have you spoken to our code officers?
Yeah, he's looking into it.
Oh, okay. When, did you speak to him recently?
I called him last year.
He said he checked into it and we never got back.
Last year we, I got into him with him, he said that the civil suit. Well, how am I gonna go after them and they can't pay tax for this, for roofs? I can't afford a lawyer for, what are they gonna do? They won't fix it.
How much was the house going for on the judicial sale?
I have no idea. It's not worth forty thousand.
When I do a judicial sale, will they wipe all the liens clean?
Well, I wrote.
So you could pay probably fifteen hundred bucks for it.
I did write, I called the courthouse and they told me to write a letter to put it on a judicial sale. I don't know.
And we could, we could do the same, we could do the same thing. We could, we could request that they put it on a judicial sale.
And would have come and fixed it.
Well, you know, I, you know, you, you, you have an interest in that place. If you're living on one side and your son's living on the other, if you can get that thing for a couple thousand dollars.
It's gonna cost too much to fix.
It's gonna cost too much to repair.
On the whole inside, if there's mold, why would you do that?
I spent a lot of money on my whole fix in it and they're on, on taking cruises and, uh.
It's not fair, but.
The first, the, the property owner is responsible for the property. If there's damages to your property, then it is a civil matter. But any code violations, that's something that we can, we can send our code enforcement officer there and, uh, and issue notice of violation.
But he doesn't do anything, he doesn't fix it.
I mean, it's a, for roof, a for roof needs to be put on a place, for roof, put a roof on a place that above what, a year?
No, we don't put roofs.
I mean, you can put my attic in.
And you're, well, you're luck. So, I mean.
My take of goal would be to get the code enforcement there to do what they can to cite them. You've, you've obviously come this far, um.
But he did it last year and nothing came out of it.
How, how many times have you talked to him? Just the one time?
Yeah, and I called him this year and he said he checked in before he ever got back up.
The squeaky wheel gets the grease. You made this trip, you're here. Make some calls this week. Stop, uh, in and see him, come back and see him next week. Keep the ball rolling. We can get quite a few citations going, which will be helpful to you. Check in with the courthouse, get the information on who's holding the lien. My bet is the property owner still owns the property and they have not foreclosed on it because typically, once they foreclose, they lose their chance to get anything. So a, a bank will hold on to that lien right up to the point where the county does it a, a free and clear sale.
Well, can I go after the bank?
Well, they're not, they won't be the property owner because they, they're, they don't wanna be, they don't want an owner property.
Aren't they responsible to fix it up though?
No, the prop, the owner. Property owner is.
Oh, they're not gonna fix it up though.
Right, so that's, that's why the bank won't foreclose because the property's not worth foreclosing on. So they'll still try and hold the property owner accountable to the very last second, till the county will wipe clear their liens to sell the property for peanuts for somebody else to take over.
Now, if we, if we do get three convictions of a code violation, I mean, you could take jail time. They could, they could turn it to a criminal offense.
Wow, would you?
But it takes a long time. Well, we, just what we said.
My house will have more damage.
Yeah, we have our code, we have our code enforcement officer stop by.
Right, it, it means you're, keep moving with it and stay on their heels and keep coming by and, you know, maybe be, just be a little bit, uh, aggressive, so to speak.
We get the fire company involved and the fire hazard.
That would probably would be part of the code enforcement. I mean, they take care of health, fire, I mean, all, all those type of codes. They're, they're enforcing those, so if.
What the building needs is a good owner and the fire company doesn't, isn't gonna be that owner and the borough is not.
I wish somebody could get in the house and look at it. I hope you do that.
Well, we'll have our code enforcement officer get ahold of you and take a look at the property. And, and, and we'll ask them to report back to council so that we know what the statute. Kevin, you have all their information, follow them.
You're, you live at sixty-five O Street?
Yes.
And the property.
Sixty-three and a half.
Sixty-three and a half.
Sixty-three and a half. Thank you.
Kathy Mirelli, one sixty-three Alford Road. When I was on council out here, we, this council voted, or I, I guess we voted, I don't know. Sometimes things are done, you vote on, but, but Hills, can you wait just one minute? Cause I wanna talk about something.
Oh, sure.
We voted, it was the L wood and this council or somebody authorized, I believe it was Rick Orak did the work. And they repaired the L wood. Cause I remember seeing the bill and questioning it and saying, why are we, like, why are we paying bills? Why are we doing construction of buildings?
Something was, something was following.
Well, it was a safety hazard. It was something was falling off the roof, but we paid as a, as a, as a council, as a borough. We paid for the L wood to be repaired. You remember Tom?
All, all we, what we did was we secured the property.
We paid, we paid, we paid.
You paid to secure the property?
We repaired it. I know, we repaired it. I know.
I disagree with you.
Well, you can disagree with me all you want, mind us.
And we've secured buildings that, that are unsafe.
We, this borough paid to repair the L wood, okay? Cause I was on council then and the, and the property owner had to come back and then reimburse the borough. And, cause I remember, I remember asking, because I think I sat on this side, it was in the beginning. And I, I vividly remember because I questioned like why we were doing that and we're getting, getting into the business of paying property owners' expenses. And I, I don't know that it was ever, that it was ever paid back. So I, I just, I look at people like this and I, I sympathize because they're good people that he just said they put a lot of money into their house and it's good people like that that are, that are getting out of here because this town is falling apart. And so however they can be helped, help them, help them.
The, the borough can't afford to go fix up everybody's property.
Well, why are we picking and choosing is what I, I would ask.
Send our code enforcement officer there and if the board tells us we need some.
Well, I as a taxpayer would, would hope that this borough would do what they can to help people like the Hills. To keep good people like that. She's crying. She's here out of her time, you know?
And Kathy, we haven't, even up to the point where we've torn properties down.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I agree. I feel like we're leaving here with no answers and just won't be serving again. Cause I mean, I shared a contact with the code enforcement officer and he said, we'll look into it. Why does that become to the point where they have to come to a meeting to ask for the code enforcement officer to go there again?
I think we should ask our code enforcement officer what enforcement actions we're taking on the property in that L wood situation.
And I'll, I'll add to this similar story of what Kathy was talking about, the L woods. We had neighbors come here for ten meetings in a row. And we really got aggressive and that's what I was talking about, just the one I said aggressive. The neighbors came here, meeting after meeting after meeting. And finally, the place was closed and shut down until repairs were made to the property. And it really was aggressive neighbors that got that job done. And that's what I mean, it may be frustrating for you, but be aggressive.
Frustrating, it's unhealthy and, uh, I don't know.
What I'm saying, just don't.
I'm having a hell of a problem, so is it isn't, yet, when this mold comes from not being fixed, that's what's gonna turn into, then I'm gonna get more expense.
I mean, we see, we see facades of buildings downtown get, uh, fixed up by taxpayer grant money. We have, we see buildings like this where a family's home is being disneyed because of.
You're on council, you're gonna make a motion.
It's gonna fall from the ladder. Anything? I suggest we at least help fix the roof.
Their roof?
The, the roof in the middle that's causing all the disaster.
There are many property owners in this community that are in the same situation. I can state the properties on two sixteen, sixteen and a half, two eighteen and two twenty Penn Street. Correct, Kevin? I believe two twenty just got a new roof on it, or two eighteen just got a new roof on it last year after being severely pressed by our code enforcement. Two sixteen and a half that have been struggling because water's been coming in from both sides. Two sixteen is on our demolition property list right now. And there's so many of these properties. My heart goes out to these people. I, I certainly understand. I bought the property next to me because of the disaster, it was a very similar situation. And I went to that judicial sale and got a bid on, a lot more than I wanted to spend, but I really didn't come up with problems. Bought it and got it fixed to the point where it's not causing any headaches. I don't give a damn, we're just making.
But not everybody can afford to do that.
I understand, I certainly understand.
The code enforcement process is very slow and very frustrating. They're not gonna make people happy when they come here tonight. But if we, if we follow the process, we've sent people to the sale of code enforcement issues, we've secured properties, secured properties. It's a whole loss.
But the town is falling down.
What does it take though to secure these properties? What does it take? Does the code enforcement officer then come to us and say, hey, we need to act on this? So if he goes there and he looks at this situation and says, we need to act on this, that's when we step in, fix, secure the building and then build the owner of the home. Let that code enforcement officer.
What was the property on Penn Street?
Two sixteen.
What's? Two sixteen. And the, uh. I mean, the Southwood Neighborhood Committee has actually repaired roofs on, on Bow Street.
But there's no money in that anymore.
People raised it, that was quite a money.
Well, I mean, Kathy Kunkel's not getting paid anymore because.
You gotta actually, um, sorry, and you actually have to, Justin, not to cut you off, but I'm with the Young Street Project, we have no money. We have nothing. What they can do is maybe check out one of the churches. Now, I know, um, they, the church on Scoop Avenue, they do have a gentleman that does roofing there and he did help out a lot. He actually on Bow Street, he put. The church help paid and the community, we all chipped in and we bought the stuff for the roof. I mean, I don't know, maybe churches they can check?
And volunteers came out to help.
Yeah, well, it was all volunteered.
But this property is owned by somebody else that you can't just go up on somebody's.
We need the property, property.
Right.
Yeah, it might not be.
Unless the code enforcement officer said otherwise, then we can go on the property.
We're busy here with this.
Was they up there in law?
If we start fixing roofs in the community, we all have a lot of.
I mean. If you said that it is, if you said it is unsafe, we have to do what we have to do.
And you already started fixing roofs for people. That's been established for, you did it for the L wood, you can go back and look. You fixed, you fixed that property. You go. I'll be in the office.
And we have paid, we, we paid to cut people's grass.
Rick, Rick, now, you, you.
We paid to remove garbage and rubbish from people's property.
The borough paid to fix the.
So we followed the process.
The borough paid. Micah, Tom remembers.
Anybody else on the floor wish to address council? Please stand up and state your name and address.
My name's Tony Prudential. I live at one sixty-seven Archery Club Road in West Bend, Council. I'm here tonight representing Skating Hill Cafe at four seventeen Scoop Street. We have a little problem and I don't know if you guys can help us out or not, and it's with parking. Uh, when we first went into this project, we went to your zoning hearing board and we got a variance for parking for our clients that had stopped in. What's happened since then is because we're so close to the high school, is that we have high school students that come there at seven thirty in the morning, park there and then don't leave until two thirty in the afternoon. The problem comes in, the majority of our business is done between eleven and one o'clock. Uh, I was wondering if there's any way possible at our cost, not the cost of borough, council, anything, that if we could put, uh, for two spots out front, which is basically what we have, twenty-two feet, if we could put a one hour parking, uh, two one hour parking signs up at, at our cost. And it's something also that I wouldn't want the chief or anyone to even enforce at this point. It's just to deter the kids from parking there. It doesn't need to be enforced whatsoever, so I don't want you to think that other dollars would go to enforcing that. And I don't even know if that's possible, but that's why I'm here tonight.
Can you name and address again, please?
Sure. Tony Prudential, P is in Peter, R U, D is in David, E N T I, one sixty-seven Archery Club Road, New Ringo, PA, one seven nine six oh.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion refers request to the parking traffic rule.
Your motion by Dave.
So the second. I'll second it, but with a question. What kind of sign do we have in front of proceedings?
There's another, I think there's another loading sign there. No, I don't think there's any sign.
There's a, there's a green, there's a green sign, no parking in your lane.
It's a no parking zone. It's a loading and unloading, loading and unloading.
But from a certain hour, basically business hours, is it? Cause nobody parks there at all. Like, I parked there at night, you know, because the business, I forget what the sign.
Something about no, no return parking.
Yeah.
Until I've seen that, sort of that nature. But, you know, under the question, I mean, it's not the first time your neighborhood has come to us in recent past about the same issue, uh, of parking with, with the students. And, and, um, I know there, there has been some, some conversation discussing it, so I think it's something in movement. I mean, I personally review the school's parking lot to find hundred, hundred spaces a day unused while our kids with their food, student parking, because the school is dictating who can park where. And really the people suffering are the people of the Southwood. Uh, so we, I, I think there is some conversation going on about your issue, uh, parking traffic and continue that, that conversation and hopefully we get some resolution for you.
Great, where do I go from here?
All right, can just, can I ask for a number at the, uh, at the shop, just so I can get ahold of you?
I, I could do better than that. I'd give you a card.
Mr. Prudential is the chairman of the Parking Traffic Committee. So what we did tonight was refer to that committee. They'll meet, they'll take a look at the issue and they'll make a recommendation back to the full council.
And I would just like to say thank you for bringing other small businesses into Magua and, uh, I've been there a few times and it's very, very good and very good business.
So I should wait to hear from the parking authority?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I can say we're already in the first week of, hey, the school year's gonna end at, the end of May. Likely that anything's gonna happen between now and the end of this school year is probably pretty slim. But we certainly ought to be able to try and take a look at it and make some sort of recommendation before the beginning of the next school year. We generally, we generally meet and discuss the more global issues like that, uh, about once a quarter. Wow. So we've, we've met in March, I believe, and so we're probably gonna meet in June to talk about it. But as, as Dave said, we probably won't have an answer for you till school's out. At least we have the summer to work on it. Uh, hopefully it won't be a big issue for you through the summer and we'll have some solutions or some potentials for you in the fall.
In the past, working with the school, it's very difficult to get any change throughout the school year.
No, I.
If they're going to make a change, they're gonna make a change in their policies or procedures throughout the summer as they can lay that out for everybody coming into the new year, so it's not bad.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't, I didn't think I needed to talk to the school.
No, you're not.
You don't, and it, but it's, your, your request is related to a larger parking issue relative to the high school area. Uh, and it's, you know, how, how their parking lot in front of the high school is utilized. And then there are other dirt lots for the seniors and juniors, as I understand it.
Yes.
And the pressures that they have, I guess, as far as students are concerned, who want to drive to the school and, you know, and park their cars there and where they park their cars, where they're permitted to park their cars on school property or not permitted to, whatever the case may be. And if it's not on school property, then it spills out into the rest of the Southwood neighborhood.
Okay. I, I can't tell you how urgent this is. I've already had two public officials come to me and tell me that they would have loved to stop to have lunch at our place and there was no place to park. They were the ones that actually recommended that I come to city council.
We try not to make a decision the first time you hear an issue because there's always other ramifications from, from these types of decisions. So we usually, we usually refer it to a committee, they talk about what, what, what the issue is and then they make the recommendation and come back. So it's not something that we usually make the decision in the interim.
Okay, if I could just request that at this time, you know, time is of the essence and I'm losing money every day because of this, but.
And, and these issues are usually discussed at the zoning, the zoning hearing.
I got a variance for parking.
So, so the parking issue should have been discussed or could have been discussed or was discussed during that process.
Right.
So you got a variance for it, so now you kind of, you have, you have this parking situation that you have. So we'll, we'll take a look at it and, and the committee will make a recommendation back to council.
Okay, let me answer this because. Okay. Let me ask you this. Because we've got a variance for parking in front of our store, am I allowed to at night put up cones? And then when I get there during the day, take them down?
On the street?
Yes.
Public parking, there's no, there's no restrictions on who can park there.
Okay. So, so then you gave me a variance, not you per se, but the zoning hearing board, that you...
You must have requested one.
Pardon me?
You must have requested one.
It was the only way I could get a permit to put a business in there?
The variance, the variance that you, that you received, and I didn't go through your paperwork, the variance you would have received, Tony, would have been a, a variance from the off-street parking requirements for the nature of that business, meaning that they're not requiring you to put off-street parking. That they grant you, that, that means you don't have off-street parking to cover your business, allow, allow, you know, you can operate it, you don't have to put off-street parking in, but your parking would be on the street. But they didn't give you a, you know, grant you parking places in front of your...
The zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance requires that if you open a business such as yours, you're required to have a certain number of off-street parking spaces.
Yes.
You said, I want a variance, I don't want to have to meet that requirement.
Why couldn't we?
And so, yeah, we granted that variance, so they can open it. And so, but those, those things, those types of parking issues, you try to deal with it through zoning.
Right.
The Parking Traffic Committee certainly paperworked it out.
Great.
But it's not going to happen tonight.
Thank you.
Isn't it a requirement that the restaurant has twenty tables that people can sit at, you need to put off-street parking spaces? Does that help work on that?
That's really, it's a certain number, it's for off-street parking, which we, which we granted as a variance. We didn't have to meet those requirements.
I remember something like that. Which, to me, is surprising that they're gonna, you need a parking space, but it makes sense.
Anybody else have any questions or comments about the motion?
This one.
I don't think so. The motion to refer to parking in town, I'm sorry. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye. Anybody else on the floor? Steve, you name an address for the...
Broad Boxer, three twelve Main Street, Tamakua. On behalf of the Northern Railroad Playground Association, now, I understand that police can't be everywhere, but we have a real problem with cars just blowing through the stop sign on the corner of Washington and flying right where our gate is, where kids run in and out all the time. I was wondering if we could get, uh, maybe some playground signs or some slow children playing signs put up somewhere on Washington Street or maybe even down on Railroad Street, where they cross the street on railroad and buying, somewhere in that vicinity, to maybe make drivers a little more aware, slow down. I mean, most people in town know it's there and are just ignorant, but the ones coming down Railroad Street and selling them away now, you realize that there's playground there, so if they see the sign, hopefully they slow down a little bit.
Uh, Michelle could vouch for this as well. Um, we even put stop signs up in the, in the one intersection of, near the Southwood Playground. And signage only does so much. If people are going to fly, they're going to fly to Tamakua, and that's unfortunate. But if we could put slow children on play signs up, they don't fly to the one.
Maybe we could refer to the Recreation and Youth Committee.
That's why I'm certainly opposed to the suggestion. I, I just would, we would need to just solidify where the best place is.
And also, Chief, as far as enforcement, the, 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 we can't be there all the time and there's, there's playgrounds and...
And I do have one other question. I'd like to know, we just had dusted dawn lights that we put up there and we took money out of our own pocket to buy. Apparently, somebody was in there today, took them down and put new lights up, which we're not complaining about the new lights, but we'd like to know what happened to the old fixtures and why we weren't informed that this was happening.
So it was, it was sold during the, uh, the outbreak, the LEDs? Yeah, I, I did have to contact, uh, that I called and I see.
Would there be any way we could get the old fixtures back?
Uh, there'd be twenty.
Because like I said, that, they came out of our own pocket and...
Yeah. I got touch my phone.
The one guy has a business where he can actually put, use it in his business in the pockets.
They, uh, uh, they operated something like this sign previously. I don't, I don't know if you guys were involved at that time. That happened probably when we did the inside. They were there today, some of the outside lights. Uh, they also did some of the, uh, East End. They've only been on board since, March, I think, yeah, beginning of March. Yeah, I apologize, I forgot to contact you, like, or comment. I'll talk with them and see, um, what was the issue.
Are the new lights better?
Don't know. They're just in now, so they're probably just coming on now.
Anybody else on the floor?
Thank you. Tony Roddick, Southwood Railroad Street. I don't ask for your stretch your resources. I am really being very weary of not being able to get anywhere in this town at any intersection because we have people who are completely, totally oblivious and ignorant of everything that is going on while they're operating their motor vehicles. That extends beyond the front edge of their hood. We have gridlock at Broad and Hunter. We have gridlock at Hunter and Cottage. We have gridlock at Railroad and South Railroad Street and Broad. We have gridlock at Five Points. We have gridlock at Greenwood and Broad. We have gridlock everywhere in this town. People pulling through traffic lights when they cannot clear the intersection on the green and they sit in the middle of the intersection when the light is red and now nobody can move. I have seen so many people pulling out to opposing traffic to turn left because somebody has blocked partially the intersection and rather than wait for the light to change and traffic to clear, we're now driving in the wrong way on a, on a two-way street, particularly on Hunter Street is where it happens a lot. And it also, I saw, you know, a theater at Center Street this afternoon, people driving on the wrong side of the street to get around people who have created gridlock in the middle of our intersections. You can't turn left, you can't turn right, so what do you do? You drive on the wrong side of the street and up over sidewalks. It's very frustrating to not be able to get through an intersection, particularly when you're turning left in that intersection because somebody's blocked the entire thing. I can understand that you may not be able to make a right-hand turn from Hunter to Broad because the traffic on Broad Street is backed up, so you kind of have to wait till the traffic clears. But seriously, when you've got two cars in the middle of Broad Street at Hunter, nobody can turn left either. And I think we need to start enforcing the code, particularly since we have reconstruction on Broad Street with the bridge. If you're in the middle of an intersection, you don't clear the intersection when the light turns red, you get a tick. I got one of those once. Two hundred and fifty dollars, twenty-five years ago. You don't do it twice. That was in California. You don't block intersections. In Philadelphia, they're all, you will get, they have people standing on the corners in Philadelphia in police officers' uniforms, waiting for you to stop in the middle of the intersection and not clear the intersection during the red light. We need to do something. I am very concerned that we're not being able to get through. And if we have an emergency vehicle, God help them, I don't know where they're going to drive. They can't drive through the ballards, they will put up on the corners of Five Points. And there's nowhere they can go and you've got semis blocking the entire Five Points intersection. People need to be considerate and if they can't be considered, they need to pay the price for violating the, the, the motor vehicle code in Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It's very, very frustrating. I don't even want to leave my, my, my place of residence until after nine p.m. anymore. I can't get out. Everywhere I go, I can't get out. And when school's letting out, forget Spruce Street and forget Hunter. I can't get off of Cottage to cross Hunter. I can't turn on Hunter because people coming down Hunter, going to Broad. And I can't get across on Cottage because, jeez, the minute traffic starts to move, everybody moves up, including the buses. And now you've got fourteen, fifteen people. The other day, I counted fifteen people behind you on Cottage. We were all the way back to Railroad Street on Cottage, trying to get across Hunter without a town. This is crazy. If something needs to be done to enforce the gridlock laws in Commonwealth, thank you.
Anybody else?
Andrew Langthorne, Brooklyn, Vermont. To the, uh, the whole family or the... I'm sure it's, I'm saying that does happen. That's, that's pretty common in this area. What about the, I don't know about this. They have insurance. How much can the insurance get involved in regards to, uh, paying, paying for or going after the other property? I'm not sure how that works, but that's a big issue in the area when it comes to properties that are affected by others.
If you, if they do damage to your property, your neighbor property does damage to your property, you could, you could file a civil suing.
With the, with your insurance company? I'm just, I'm just asking questions, you know. I don't know.
If you sue the neighbor property owner, neighbor and property owner, report to their insurance company and then you just can't be made the same...
So have, today if it went on, I could fight for your, it's all civil. That's the truth. Okay, thank you.
And there have been neighbors who sued their neighbor because of the property did damage to, to their property.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have, I don't know. You know where I live on Orskirk Street? South Street, in that alley with the kids from the high school? It is terrible. The trash that I have to pick up, today, me and my little granddaughter were out there playing in my yard. I had to pick her up and take her in the house because of these kids with their metal. I go out nicely, can you please watch what you're saying? It was disgusting. We called the police, the police came up, looked at these kids and says, what's going on? Takes off. End of story. Something needs to be done up there. Somebody is going to get severely hurt up there. There's fights up there constantly and you call, and not, not, I'm not picking on the cops because I, I praise what they're doing with all this other stuff that they're messing with. But we need to do something up there. Somebody's going to get hurt. There's fights up there constantly. And it's not like kids that I know. These are regular, you know, that I see every day. So when I called today for the cops to come, they came up, they sat there, said to the kid, what's going on? Nothing. Okay, see you, and left. I thought they were going to come around the block to talk to me. They didn't. They left. Something, something's going to be done up there because I think there's going to be a tragedy up at that school. So be ready for it. It isn't good with these kids.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not mayor's report.
Thank you, Micah. Last meeting, I, I certainly, I, I have a lot to say about the, the sights and, and, uh, leftover of the winter, the harsh winter it was. Uh, Kevin, the street sweeper, has been out, uh, throughout town and it certainly helped things, uh, spruce up quite a bit. The, uh, the school will keep it pretty, the ground with the scouts and, and a number of other volunteers, uh, that, that wonders as well. I, you know, just day to day, every citizen doing their own part and, and, you know, picking up here and there to, to continue this process. We don't have to wait for the spring. School will keep it pretty project to, uh, help maintain our communities. Certainly goes a long way. We also talked about some, some properties that were in, uh, sad states, windows smashed out and whatnot. Several properties were discussed on Spruce Street, two sixteen, sixteen and a half, no, one sixty, sixty-three, sixty-one? No, sixty?
One, you know, one sixty, one sixty and a half, one sixty-two.
Correct. Okay, thank you for the clarification. They are all boarded up, front and back. We spoke about Monoy Street, the corner of Mon, I'm sorry, yes, Monoy and Cole?
Yeah.
And that is now boarded up, saw, the windows are all smashed out. You're welcome. I thank, uh, thank Kevin and the staff. Uh, it is frustrating. There are a lot of properties in the community that are in dire repair. It is very difficult when they are your neighbor or in your neighborhood. It is, it is very frustrating.
Who paid for it to be boarded up?
We do. We, we do. Right. It's something that just doesn't go out and happen. Our code enforcement goes out there. We are dealing with a lot of issues throughout the community and sometimes it is very frustrating and, uh, I know many of us, uh, you know, take things very personal at certain times, but it's, it's a matter of keeping a clear head and staying focused and continuing the fight and identifying the issues and moving forward with those issues. Getting past that business, last meeting, I also talked about the Dear Tamakua program, uh, moving forward. We have another letter I'd like to share with everybody as well. Dear Tamakua, I had six good English teachers in junior and senior high and they obviously prepared me for life with words and writing. One of those words is native, which I see often in news stories and especially in obituaries. Many times the story says someone is a native of the town they live in when the writer really meant to say that the person is a resident of that town. I recall in time when a newspaper wrote about me and said I wasn't native of Tamakua. But I'm not a native of Tamakua. I'm a native of Harrisburg. That's where my naivety took place and that's how one can figure out the place he is a native of. Where was he born? Early in my life, we moved to Still Creek, which is part of a greater Tamakua area, but it isn't the borough of Tamakua. When I was in fourth grade, fourth grade, we moved into a rental in the six-hundred block of Arlington Street and thus began my lifelong love for Tamakua. Tamakua was a great place to grow up. We didn't have gangs the way the cities did and I don't even remember many bullies. If we weren't occupied with organized baseball or other activities, we played soldiers in the woods behind the East End Playground. As we got older, we moved from the woods to the stripping holes, but we soon reached the age of cars and girls and left our youthful games behind. I worked at the Evening Carrier for two years after graduation, then joined the Navy. When I was a freshman at Penn State Hazleton, I lived with my mother in a rental on West Broad Street. Then I went to the main campus and left Tamakua behind. But I do know that my decade in Tamakua shaped me in many positive ways from Sunday School to the American House. There's a parent. And several school teachers, friends and their parents too. So while I'm not technically a native of Tamakua, I do think of myself that way and I hope my English teacher will forgive me. Love, R. Thomas Burner. And these, these letters have been coming in and whether it's somebody who's lived here, somebody who lives here, uh, somebody who just passed through the community, uh, it's really, uh, uh, every time you get a chance to read one of these letters coming through, it's certainly a, a pleasure and, and we can all relate, I'm sure, in one way or another. I didn't grow up per se in Tamakua, but I do remember those games in the East End Woods and I do remember crawling through the, uh, the mine pits, as dangerous as it may have been. And we may think today that, oh my God, keep the kids out of the pits. It's certainly something we enjoyed doing as, as kids. Thanks, Mr. Burner. That's all I have. Thank you.
Solicitor's report. Any unfinished business? Your business? I put a, I asked them to put a packet in front of the rural council back in two thousand and eleven when they were finishing up the Center Street Bridge. Actually, when they were designing the Center Street Bridge, we, we requested that they put street lighting on the bridge instead of considering that as part of the project. And PennDOT suggested that we apply for a transportation grant to put the streetlight on that bridge. We did apply in two thousand and eleven and did not, and, and, and did not receive funding. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to ask, ask them to consider resubmitting the application because there's another round of...
Is it the ESRC code or...
No, we, no, Jason would be involved.
No.
Just a rural...
But it's, it's a grant application.
A grant.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Dan. Under the question, the application was already prepared a couple of years ago. You have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor which should address this motion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Any other good business? Executive session.
Take a motion that we have an additional executive session again for personal management.
Motion by Dave, second by Dan, all those in favor say aye. Sorry, anyone opposed, no.